Okay, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today is May 26, 2006. This is the monthly meeting of the Board of Education. As always, we begin our meetings with an act of reverence and the pledge of allegiance. I have two volunteers this morning from number 12. I'm gonna come up there. These gentlemen are from number... Let's give them a round of applause. And the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna tell us their names.
Hi, I'm Declan Keane.
Hi, I'm Kieran Keane.
All right. You got family here with you, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Our mom and our grandparents.
Your mom and your grandparents. So let's give a round of applause to mom and grandparents. We got a lot of great schools in the district, but I gotta tell you, I have a little bias towards number 12. My kids went there. It's a great school. I think Commissioner Evans went there. Yours were there, so... Oh, look at there. We got a whole... You guys got a lot of support. Okay? You ready?
Yes.
All right. Let's follow their lead. Go ahead, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's give them another round of applause. All right. The first thing we have to do is we have to take care of some review of minutes. You know, we've had a lot of meetings, particularly this last couple of months, so we have to review those minutes and approve them. Ladies and gentlemen, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 28th, May the 9th, May the 10th, May the 11th, May the 12th, May the 23rd, and May the 24th?
So approved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hallmark and seconded by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We did that. The next item on our agenda is the, I believe, award presentation. I think Commissioner Elliott was going to do that, right? She's not here. So I'll tell you what. We'll put that off for a quick second. And we got some young people who asked to be... Speak on agenda items, and we know they have very busy agendas tonight. They probably gotta eat, probably gotta do homework. So we're gonna ask that these young folks come and speak to you and the Board of Education right at the top of the agenda. They are our priority. And we're gonna begin with Beatrice Elmer Martin. Did I... You gonna help me pronounce that correctly when you come up here? Is that you? Are you Beatrice? Let's give Beatrice a round of applause. Beatrice, I'm terrible at names. Could you pronounce your name and let everybody know what the correct way to say it?
Beatrice Elmer Martin.
All right. Thank you very much. I didn't do too bad. Beatrice, where do you go to school?
School 12.
All right. Another 12. All right. What grade are you in?
12.
All right. So you decided you wanna speak to the board and to everybody in here. Go ahead. Tell us what you got to say.
Yo quiero darle gracias por darnos el maestro de español. I wanna say thank you for giving us Spanish. Pero pienso que para ser completamente exitosos nosotros necesitamos maestros y maestras de tiempo completo. But I think that for us to be fully successful, we need full-time teachers. Entonces, por favor traten de darnos maestros y maestras de tiempo completo. Therefore, please try to give us full-time teachers.
Wow. Nicely done. Let's give her a round of applause. Okay. Declan Keane? Keane? Oh, I definitely need some help there. Now, you just helped us out with the pledge. Speak loudly and clearly in the mark and mic and tell everybody, how do you correctly pronounce your name?
Declan Keane.
Declan Keane. All right. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Declan Keane. I am 12 years old, and I was born in Medellin, Colombia. I'm a sixth-grade student in Ola program at school number 12. I have heard that you aren't paying the funding for the five teachers we need for seventh grade. Why? Well, it would be to help School 12 be a unique and top-prospect school in the RCSD system. If the teachers are full-time, it will allow them to get to know...
Mr. Keane?
Yes?
You got a lot of good things to say, and I want you to just slow down just a little bit so that we all can hear. Don't worry about it. Take your time. No one's gonna buzz you out. You got all the time you want. Go ahead.
Why? Well, it would be to help School 12, a unique and top-prospect school in the RCSD system. If the teachers are full-time, it will allow them to get to know the kids and have fun and allow them to help the kids, whether it's studying for a test, helping with homework, or even a school project. It will allow the teachers, the students, and the school to stay together and grow into a model school in the district. I bet if you can get the five full-time teachers that we need, we can grow the school into the best school in the city, then the state, then the nation, and eventually the world. So I feel that this isn't... That it is insane and crazy that you are considering not having full-time teachers in seventh and eighth grade. I know that you have got the funding, so please invest it in our school. I know that I'm not asking for a lot, but please fund the five.
All right. Nice job. Nice job. Let's see. Douglas Bell... Douglas?
He's not here.
He's not here? Okay. All right. And Victoria, since you were kind enough to draw our attention to the fact that we had young people here, do you wanna... Where'd you go? I know she was here. Come on up.
My name is Victoria Robertson. I'm a parent of a ninth grader at Wilson who went through School 12 and a sixth grader at School 12. And we're here, as Declan and Beatrice so wonderfully asked, to ask you to fully fund our seventh-grade program. That means we need 1.2 FTE additional to what is currently staffed. I'm gonna give you a quick history lesson. School 12 never wanted to be anything other than a K-6 school, but Superintendent Bazzard said, "You must be K-8." We said, "Whatever. We have to do. We have to do." When Dr. Vargas came to be in charge, we said, "Hey, please, you don't believe in K-8s. Can we stop being a K-8 school?" But apparently, that train had already left the station. The funding for the building renovation was based on it being a K-8 school, and the reimbursement rates are so different. You guys know that. You know, we was like... But then, nothing shrank in the incoming kindergarten. There was no plans being made for us to be K-8. We thought, "Well, maybe it's just gonna go away." But about a year... About a year ago, we learned from Dr. Vargas that, yes, next in the 2016, 17, you will be a K-8 school. You'll be adding seventh grade. We're like, "Really? We're gonna have a new principal? We're gonna move into a new building, and we're gonna add a new program? What a smart thing to do." But they said, "You have no choice." So the community of School 12 said, "Okay, we're gonna make this work. We're gonna make this an awesome school. We're gonna make it work." We looked at what our strengths were, the dual-language, the honors programs, the culture and climate of the school, caring people, the neighborhood, and got together with the neighbors, the staff from Central Office, with teachers, and developed a great program. So great that all but 13 of the current sixth graders have decided to stay at School 12. And there's a waiting list of more than 40 students. I was amazed. I thought, "My gosh, that shows the trust people have in the bones of School 12, the culture of School 12, and the need that the district has for an awesome seventh-grade program." However, we got final staffing a couple of weeks ago, and we learned at that point the school was staffed with only three FTE. We had only .2 Spanish, 1.0 Math, and .6 for the other academic subjects. That meant no Ola. That meant no co-teaching, which was the model they had developed to work with the program. So we argued. We talked to this commissioner, and thank you very much. We got the Spanish raised back up to 1.0 so that the dual-language will continue as was advertised in the school choice program. But that's not enough. We really believe that we need that full 1.2 additional teachers because we need full-time teachers to make this new program work. Everybody knows, in middle schools, it's all about relationships. We talk so much about needing to improve climate and culture in our schools, and yet here you go, starting a new program, not fully staffing it. I know it's staffed to the minimum. It's staffed what's necessary, but it's not staffed for what's necessary for kids to have success. These teachers would not be just, you know, kinda sitting around doing nothing. They have a full co-teaching model where the teachers would be actively teaching that whole time, doing pull-outs, push-ins, really working with the children, having that opportunity to build those relationships, also having that opportunity to collaborate with each other, build a strong teaching core of middle school, and get connected. Lots of folks have said, you know, the complaint we get back is equity, that this isn't fair to the other K-8 schools. They need more teachers. But this is our startup year. You chose to do this to our school. You chose to add seventh grade. Do it right, please. And we have other speakers that'll tell more. Thank you.
Barbara, did I pronounce your last name correctly? Oh, wow. Okay. Gold star. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Barb Van Kirkhoe, and I'm an RCSD parent, as a member of the community... Whose daughter actually did graduate from School 12.
All right.
So I agree with all what you guys have said about seventh grade there. As a member of the Community Task Force, I helped draft the proposed code of conduct, and so tonight I stand here hopeful and apprehensive at the same time about it. The proposed code of conduct and other strategies recommended by the Community Task Force represent a huge culture shift in our district. I don't see us improving school climate any other way, though. So the hopeful part, there are signs that this culture shift is starting to happen in our community. The Community Task Force is still going strong 18 months after it began, with people committed to transforming school climate and willing to put in the sweat equity to make it happen. Fifteen RCSD schools are piloting restorative practices this year, and seven to 10 more want to be trained in them. And the racial justice work this community began three years ago is starting to take hold. And still, I have some apprehension. I attended the two-day training with Dr. Joy DeGru a couple of weeks ago. At the start of the training, Dr. DeGru seemed optimistic, saying that we, as a district, were ripe to continue the work on racial justice and relationship-based education. However, at the end of the two days, remarks by Dr. DeGru indicated that she was less optimistic than she had been at the beginning. She told us something to the effect of, "We had better get our act together to address the educational and suspension disparities in our district, or it's only gonna get worse." Just by watching our faces and reactions, Dr. DeGru said she could see the factions in the room and the distrust among them. Let me end with a parable. There was a man who was lost in the desert. After wandering around for some time, he came upon a little shack with a water pump outside. Next to the pump was a small jug of water and a note. It said, "Pour all the water into the top of the pump to prime it. If you do this, you will get all the water you need." So like this man, we have a choice to make. Do we hold on to that jug because of fear? Or do we... So if we hold on to that jug, doing the same things we've been doing, the results will be the same: stressed-out teachers, disengaged and suspended students, and parents afraid for their children. Or do we come together to prime the pump and work the plan to transform our school climate so it's cool, fresh water on a hot day? I say, "Let's prime that pump, build trust, work in partnership, and come up with innovative ways to find the resources we need to effectively implement this proposed code." Thank you.
Thank you. I want you all to give Barbara an extra round of applause. This is not the first time I've done this. I usually do recognize parents and young folks, but Barbara has served on our committees and, as she indicated, the code of conduct, and she goes above and beyond, and so I wanna recognize her. I appreciate if you all would help me do that by applauding her. Thank you, Barbara. Pamela Bailey. I know I messed that up. Oh, is that you, Pamela? Says parent. You're not a parent. All right. Pamela, why don't you pull that mic down a little bit? We wanna make sure we hear you. All right. Go ahead.
My name is actually Maya Hatch. I just... They used my mother's name.
Okay.
My name is Maya Hatch. I am a sixth grader... A sixth-grade Ola student at number 12. And I have a ninth-grade sister who graduated from 12 and a third-grade brother who is also in 12... Number 12's Ola program. I would like to read some comments that were signed onto our petition to fully fund the five. "School number one. School 12 has provided an amazing education for my current sixth grader. Failing to adequately staff seventh and eighth grade is detrimental to the well-being of our students, not only now, but in the future, as our children will miss out on opportunities with our planned partnership with Wilson. Please consider and ensure our children are given every chance for success." I'm signing... This is the second one. "I'm signing because I believe in School 12, believe in the public education, and believe in RCSD, and I know that none of these institutions can thrive without institutional support. I also know that the single most important budget line in any school is for its teachers." Thank you. The third one and last. "It is imperative that our community receive the resources necessary for its growth. We must invest the education and support of our children to prepare them for success." And there were 180 more of these comments. Thank you.
Pamela, before you go... Oh, you're not Pamela. What's your name again?
Maya.
Maya? Come here for a second. I have this button, and it says, well, it says, "I believe in Rochester School District. I believe in graduation. I believe in hard work. I believe in my future. I believe in learning, respect. I believe in me." So I wanna give you that. You did a great job today. Excellent. Excellent job. Let's give her a round of applause.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Keane, and I'm an Edison Tech graduate and a School 12 parent. Our boys are both in the Ola program at School 12, Kieran in fourth grade and Declan in sixth. This school year began with the same uncertainty and trepidation that I felt the year before Declan entered kindergarten, the dreaded school-choice lottery. In kindergarten, we had a definite number-one choice. It was Ola at School 12. You see, our boys were born in Colombia, and I saw a dual-language program as a must, having learned that language would be the basis for maintaining a connection to their heritage. Once we got the news that we were in, I relaxed for the next seven years. Declan was in a good place at a great school. This year, however, going into sixth grade, I knew we would face a different challenge. Where is the best place for Declan in seventh grade? Will School 12 grow out, as had been discussed? What would that look like? Will there be honors? If not, then where? Not soda for Declan. The only clear answer for us was to leave the district. As a lifetime city resident and an RCSD grad, I struggled with even considering this as an option. When we received the news that not only would 12 be adding seventh grade, but that we were being invited to participate in designing the program, I began to have hope. Together with other parents, teachers, and administration, we worked diligently to design a program that we felt would be a model for K-8 grow-out schools. We took into consideration the unique needs of middle-school students, the concerns of elementary-school parents, and what we learned from the experience of those who had attempted this before us. Yes, we did it. We... No need to look any further. This is the place to prepare my child for his secondary education. Apparently, I was not the only parent that felt this way, with all but 13 sixth graders electing to stay at 12 and 47 students on the waiting list. We obviously hit the mark. Now, at the 11th hour, here I stand, fearful that I've made the wrong decision, looking at what I need to do to ensure that the one and only seventh-grade experience my son will have will be the best it can be. None of the K-8 growouts have been staffed with full-time teachers. None of the other K-8 growouts are optimistic about succeeding. If nothing changes, nothing changes. All we're asking is that you fund the five teachers we need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got all these great smiles when these kids come up here. You must... You really like number 12 school?
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's hear about it. Make sure you pull that mic down so that we can hear you.
Next year, they are gonna have seventh and eighth grade at my school. They say that they will only have part-time teachers and not full-time teachers. I think that they should have full-time teachers because they need to know their teacher and not have a different teacher every, I don't know, period. If I was them, I wouldn't wanna have a different teacher because I love my teacher very much, and I think that I like staying with her all day. I've been in School 12 since kindergarten, and I've had a different teacher every year, but I haven't had a different teacher, like, every day, pretty much. And I think that the seventh grader and eighth grader should have full-time teachers. Thank you.
Excellent job. Are you related to Nate Schoonover?
Yeah.
Is he your brother, or...
He's my brother.
Well, tell him to come on down. Call him out. Hey, hey, listen. Listen, I need you to do it. Call his name out.
Nate Schoonover.
All right. Come on, Nate.
My name is Nate Schoonover, and I...
Nate, up to the microphone.
Okay. And I represent School 12 for the seventh and eighth Ola full-time teachers. We demand what was promised to us and what we promised in coming seventh through eighth grade families. We need 1.2 more teachers. We need full-time teachers, fully fund the five at school. Between Wilson, a magnet school, and our school, when we fully funded the five, Rochester will be a magnet city. Many people will be wanting... Will want to come to our city for... Because we will have such great schools.
Right.
I mean, where is there any evidence of a successful middle-school growth without part-time facility? With part-time facility? Parents and teachers at other K-8 schools warned us of the struggles that arise in the K-8 school with such a wide range of ages and poor planning. We must learn from these mistakes. I continue to reinvent a broken wheel. We are demanding that School 12 is properly staffed with full-time teachers because we have learned that understaffing and part-time teachers does not work. Thank you.
Hey, Nate. Nate, do me a favor. Call out the name Natasha Bell.
Natasha Bell.
All right. Nice job, Nate.
Hello, my name is Natasha Bell. I'm a parent and also a teacher in the district. I'm yielding my time to my son, Douglas Bell Freytek, because we just came from school.
My name is Douglas Bell Freytek. I'm a sixth-grade student at James P. Duffy School, number 12. I would like everyone to stand and face our flag, please.
All right. Let's do what the man said.
I juror filidad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y de la República que representa una nación bajo Dios indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos. Uh, thank you. You may be seated. I would not have been able to say the pledge in Spanish if I had not been in the Ola program at School 12. My family comes from parts of the world, such as Jamaica, Germany, and the United Kingdom. I want to be fluid in Spanish while learning math, science, social studies, and English because I want to be an engineer that develops technology for the world and for America and the world. The only way that can happen is if I'm... If you fully fund the Ola program for both seventh and eighth grades with full-time teachers for science, English, social studies, and math, so that I can continue to learn Spanish along with my subjects and become a bilingual engineer. Please invest in my future and the future of my classmates in the Ola program. Thank you.
Eleanor Peyton. She'll be filed by Mary Beth Knowles. And Ms. Knowles, you can sort of stand right by that table there.
My name is Eleanor Peyton. I am a parent of a kindergarten student at School 12, and I am also a school counselor at James Monroe High School for the past 15 years. I started there when we had... We were a middle-school model. We had the Language Academy, which was one... A very successful program here in the district. Back then, most of the students who started as Language Academy students came from the Ola program at School 12. It was pretty much streamlined to go from Ola, Language Academy, and then from there they went to different, successful programs in the district that have now either remained or a lot of them have gone away. But I just wanna give you a little history of that because, as a school counselor, I am very concerned about what's going on at School 12. I have chosen to send my daughter to a Rochester City School District. It's against my husband's wishes. He wanted to leave. The plan was, you know, we get married, have a baby, and we leave, right? Because that's what people do. So we just... I talked him into staying specifically because of School 12. I am bilingual. I was born in Colombia. I value bilingualism, and I wanted to make sure that I can instill that skill set in my daughter to be prepared in this global society in whatever she does. So I know that this is such a... It's a unique gem that we have here in this district that attracts many parents to stay. I can tell you right now that I witnessed the Language Academy program unfortunately disappearing, and I can say that it was because, from what I saw, poor planning and staffing on the district's part. And I do not want that to happen to School 12. I want it to be a successful program for not only my daughter, but for many young people that deserve this type of quality education. Additionally, I wanted to mention that, as a school counselor, I know that honor students, they need a lot of support. We have... My daughter in the Ola program, what another thing I love is the diversity. Not everybody is as privileged as she is. Most of the students in her class come with a lot of barriers and challenges already. So our students, you know, are... They have gaps compared to their suburban peers. So when they need... When they have those honors classes with the rigor and demand, they're gonna need support outside of the time that those teachers are there. If they're part-time, they're gonna have to go to a different school, and the student with... When they need the help, they're not gonna be able to get that type of academic support. I see that now as a school counselor. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I would like for the honors track to be a direct path into successful programs such as the IB program. So if we have K-8 going right into the 9-12 model, that's less transitions, which is the primary reason for all these changes in the district, so that would support that. But it has to be a successful program. Next year, as the seventh graders will be taking eighth-grade honors classes, which means that they would earn seven high-school credits... Sorry, I have ADD, so the sound distracts me. So next year, the students will have the three high-school credits plus the Regents examinations that are coming up, and if they do not pass those exams, they will not get those credits. So it'll be a waste of time for our students. They need to be prepared this coming year. Not only are they going to be going and taking the Regents exams, but they'll be expected to take the eighth-grade assessments as well, lots of testing. They need to be prepared as seventh graders. The last thing I wanted to mention was that, being RTA, I do know that a big push in the RTA contract talks a lot about increase in common planning time in order for middle schools to be... In order for middle schools to be successful, that cluster model is, is primarily the common planning time is what encompasses the cluster in middle schools. Thank you.
Well, it didn't stop because I'll give you more time.
And I do have ADD.
Wrap it up.
Okay, so that was hard.
Thank you.
Um, common plan, all right, implementation. All right, so, part of the contract also talks a lot about the code of conduct, which was talked about previously and which talks about restorative practices. The key to these changes are building relationships. So, on top of the academic needs, we also are talking as a district, moving and shifting towards that building relationships, restorative practices, the code of conduct. And by not funding the five, you're really going against what is expected from, from us as teachers and educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth Knowles. Mary Beth Knowles will be filed by Pastor Jose Rodriguez.
I didn't say it at the beginning of the speaker's list, but the buzzer is there, not to annoy you, but to make sure that you stay within the three-minute timeframe that I'm sure that you were told when you called in. And we do that to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. We're not disrespecting you by having that bell continue to ring. We want to make sure we respect the time of others. Thank you, sir. Pastor?
Thank you. As you said, I, my name is Pastor Jose Rodriguez. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for the service that you run into our community. And I've got a, I want to speak from a biblical perspective on this issue with transgender using bathrooms across the board, even in our schools. The Apostle Paul, before his own conversion to Christ, believed himself justified in persecuting to the death Christians. But he states out of Romans 1:16 after his conversion, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believeth." Paul further describes the details of the gospel found in 1 Corinthians 15, 3 through 4. "For I delivered unto you, first of all, that which I also received: how that Christ died for our sins according to the Scriptures, and that he was buried, and that he rose again the third day according to the Scriptures." You see, folks, what divides us is the same thing that divides us from God. The Bible calls its sin. Bible described as the transgression of God's law. The wages of sin is physical death, spiritual death, and by consequence, division. But the Scriptures doesn't stop there. It says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." I was never a transgender, but certainly a philandering fornicator and adulterer. Since I felt the urge and its pleasure, I thought, "How wrong could it be?" But God changed me from my wicked ways through the gospel message that says that God was in Christ reconciling the world unto himself, not imputing their trespasses unto them. God grants us the power to be reconciled to himself as his sons and daughters, therefore brothers and sisters. This can only be done on his terms while acknowledging our need of him. For whosoever calls upon the name of the Lord shall be saved. God will justify any sinner that comes to him on his terms and merits, but he'll not justify any man's sins, no matter how they might feel. The gospel of Jesus Christ has the power to change the hearts of all men. The Bible says, "For with the heart man believeth unto righteousness according to his dictates." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. Angela Kraus. Angela Kraus will be filed by Henry Padron. Padron, sorry. Padron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Angela Kraus, and I guess first I'd like to remind you to, to separation of church and state, but that's not what I came to speak about. What I came to speak about is a cut position in my school, a 12 school. I'd like to start by saying, the day that I chose my position at 12 school, I jumped up and down at placement day, and I was so thrilled to go to 12 school where I knew that the art program was embraced the way that it is and has been since 1971, when I was born. I was so excited to go to a school that would guarantee that I would have to put on the amazing art show that we do, and this year, we put on four. I love my school, and I love my kids, and I love my district. So, I understand that you are trying to create some equity across the district. I am disheartened, extremely disheartened, that that may come at the expense of losing one of the most amazing teachers that I've worked with in 18 years in this district. My co-teacher is in her third year of teaching, and she is the kind of teacher we don't want to displace, that we don't want to push around and break her spirit. She is what we need. She is what we want. She is what 12 school wants and needs to see her position cut from a 1.0 to a .6. Partially is in line with some of the things that we're talking about with the middle school not getting what it needs and building the middle school in a way that, I've been at middle school grow-outs, and I've seen how that doesn't work. But I am an optimist, and I always go in and make it work and bring it, and bring it with a positive attitude. I've gone to the meetings on the middle school grow-out, and I'm, it's breaking my heart to think all the while, I never thought for a second that we were gonna have less of my art program to bring to that school. Both myself and my co-art teacher are involved in after-school clubs, are involved in extra education with our students outside of class. We are both, I'm, I'm extremely active in my community. This is my home. This is our home. Just, I want to say, please, consider not breaking apart the things that work to fix the other things that we're trying to make sure work.
Thank you. Henry Padron.
Thank you for having us here today. My name is Henry Padron, and I'm the kindergarten teacher of many of the children who've come up here to speak today. I'm a 30-year veteran of the Rochester City School District. But I grew up in the PBE era, pre-bilingual education. As a young student in the South Bronx, we didn't have bilingual programs. So, I was seeing children arriving from Cuba, from other countries, from Africa, imagine, all over the world, who were just put in a situation where they had to literally, as we say today, sink or swim. Just yesterday, I had a mom. Her child was there to get screened for our program. Beautiful, beautiful young person there. Mom and I sort of started chatting. We didn't know each other. And in the course of our chat, she reiterated what today is about. This is within 24 hours. A mother was telling me, "Mr. Padron, I want my daughter to be in the dual-language program. If my daughter does not get accepted into the dual-language program, I am seriously contemplating moving out of this district." This is a young, beautiful African-American woman talking about her daughter, and her mother is retiring this year after 34 years in the Rochester City School District. So, what I'm talking about has deep, deep roots that go farther than anything we could elaborate here in speech in three-minute segments. I also want to let you know that bilingual education has multiple models. The one we have is dual-language. Dual-language requires a 50/50 combination of the two linguistic groups that are involved in that learning. The 50% who would be the native English speakers with the 50% who are the native Spanish speakers. Without that dynamic, dual-language ceases to exist. Dual-language in New York State isn't more than just English and Spanish. It's driven here because of the numbers, as per Commissioner's Regulations, Part 154, that says 20 speakers of the same language in the same school merits a bilingual program. We've taken it to another level where we have established our dual-language program. Now, sort of in the spirit of the entire thing, this is the printout taped together quite rudely, rather crudely, of the 183 people who responded to our change or petition. Among them, there were people from Batavia, Victor, Pittsford, Penfield, Rochester, all saying, "This notion of what you're doing is powerful. It's as powerful as us believing that bilingual education was a right for our students." People got their heads busted in protest. They were jailed. People were killed over the demand for bilingual education. And look at us today, 40 years after bilingual education is law, is gone through its growth spurts, et cetera, still saying that we need the equity for our program to exist per the need for our children to receive an excellent education. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we're going to move to that portion of our agenda, our awards ceremony, recognition ceremony. Vice President Elliott will lead us in that recognition. This is called our I Believe Award. About a year or two ago, the board decided to start recognizing individuals, students, and then the students would then recognize a staff person or an adult in their building that believed in them. And then the next month, we alternate this. The next month, we recognize whole schools. The Yes We Can Award recognizes whole schools that have made some improvement. So, again, this month, it's the I Believe Award. And how it's set up is a student is recognized for what they've done, and then they, this is a real paradigm shift, and then the student says which adult in that building helped them out. Vice President Elliott?
Thank you, President White. Students from the Nathaniel Rochester Community School 3 received an award for innovation, inventions in the 2016 Xerox Square Challenge Day. 20 students from Nathaniel Rochester School Number 3 participated in the 2016 Xerox Science Challenge Day on May 12, 2016. Four teams of students from the school were honored at this event for their innovative interventions and presentations out of a total of 170 students from 17 schools throughout Monroe County. Tonight, we recognize these talented young inventors with the I Believe Award for their scientific acumen and creativity. The following students from Nathaniel Rochester Community School are receiving the award and should come forward. Nayaja Madina and Michael Stroda for first-place honors for their invention of the All-in-One Farm Stick. Are you here?
All right, all right.
Mr. Moore, would you come up, please? Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore, would you come up here? This principal is coming up. Is Michael, you're Michael Stroda. Is Nayaja Madina here? Ebony Council and Jahira Drum Google for second-place honors for creating the Flower Power Solar Charger. Would you come forward, please? Najimir Wright and Cedric Hall for receiving the Student Choice Award for developing the candy shooter. Why don't you stand on this side so everybody can see you? Nong Hall and Craig Hunter for the presentation skills and discussing their invention, Rocky's Room. And then I'm told that they're not here, but I'm sure the principal will receive their awards. Can I have the school staff who also supported them?
Wait, wait, he's here. All right.
Now, who are you? What's your name, honey? Okay. Congratulations. And the school staff are, are you Vicki? All right. And Peter Maestro Avani? Not here. Victor Wilson? Joe Larson. All right. Well, please, oh, and let me just, nope, 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 not yet, not yet. The parents, can the parents stand?
All right.
We want to thank the parents and the school staff headed by Principal Moore and all of these wonderful students for the excellent work that they're doing. We just know, I believe with all my heart, that we're going to see even greater things from these students with your, with the parent's support. And if our schools are going to support them, continue to support them, we just know by faith that they're going to do great things. So, thank you so very much. God bless you.
Oh, a few more parents.
Congratulations again.
I want to thank everybody for coming out, particularly the parents and staff members. We realize your day is long, and to come out here tonight to recognize the young people shows that you understand, like the Board of Education does, that they are our, our priority. So, thank you again. Let's give those groups, the parents, staff members, another round of applause. Before we begin our superintendent's report, I should issue on behalf of the Board of Education apology. We did notice that our meeting was gonna start earlier, and we were canceling cookies, commissioners, and conversation because our intention was to support the Eagles. The fact is, many of you probably have learned that the Rochester City School District has not had a baseball team in the sectional finals in 36 years. I think it was 1980. I think Jimmy Carter was president. It's a long time ago. And the Eagles got us back into the sectionals. The game was to be tonight at 7 o'clock. So, all the board members, the superintendent staff agreed, "Let's see if we can get this thing done." Unfortunately, the weather was not cooperating, but the game is scheduled for, and Sean's gonna talk about this. It's been rescheduled, unfortunately. It's been rescheduled in Batavia for tomorrow. But for those of you who can't make it, I will be there screaming my heart out, and I will be wearing this T-shirt. Go Eagles! Come on, say, "Go Eagles!" Go Eagles! All right, we're gonna now move on to our superintendent's reports. Mr. Nelms? Dr. Nelms?
Good evening, Commissioner and community. I'll wait until the parents and students kind of file out here. And as they're filing, I'll mention, we had a generous donor who understood that it costs $4 to get to the sectional games and offered to purchase 1,000 tickets for East students, families. We had 575 people sign up for today's game. So, it's unfortunate that the students won't have that type of support tomorrow since the game starts at 4, but I do want to publicly thank the, the private donor for, for buying 1,000 tickets for East families, the staff, staff children, and our, and our students. So, thank... So thank him if he's listening. Tonight, I'm going to go over a few slides quickly. I want to touch on the graduation projections for this year, talk about marking period three data, attendance behavior, and with our budget. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to just discuss how we're progress monitoring our students. These are progress updates, so the numbers are not final, so I don't want to get too caught up on the actual data, but I do want to take some time to highlight some of the progress monitoring and tracking that we're doing at East with our counselors, our administrators, and our teaching staff. This is a priority this year for the East EPO in tracking these data.
I just, one question. When you go through your report, your headings are, they're not legible. They're numbers that are on top of each other. So when you go through that, will you tell us what the headings are?
Okay, I have to put my glasses on. I can't see from here.
I see, I'm not sure what, yeah.
Yeah, I can't see that. I don't have it.
Here. He can read it off of this.
All right, it must have been when it was emailed, I don't know, because it was clear on my version.
So you see, the score, whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the scores, yes, in the first column, it's 65 to 100. Second column is 64 to 55. Second column would be 0 to 64.
What's the last one?
It's a number range, 0 to 64.
So the last column, not taken, okay.
It's not taken, yeah.
Is that the same for the ones under the regions?
Yep, same ones. All right, so I'm not sure if it was just a different version of word that was sent, but it was clear when we sent it. So these are, so I want to highlight two things here. I mentioned earlier this year that when we, when the EPO became part of East, we were told that the graduation rate would be 46% at the end of this year. And that was from the school administration, that was not from district, I want to make that clear. And so based on that data, we made projections for this year's seniors at 46% moving forward. But by January, we actually realized the number was actually 19%. So there was a gap between what we were told and our current reality. And so we have to recalibrate our starting point, but our end goal of 84% or 85% for kids graduating who enter sixth grade this year still stands. So our end goal is the same, but the incremental change, we have to reflect based on our current reality. The box to the far right is our graduation prediction to date. About 23% of students have met graduation requirements. We hope to increase that with the June exams, but we make no excuse. We started at 19%, we're making incremental gains. And for those in the community who don't understand how graduation metrics are calculated, they begin when a student enters ninth grade. And so the work that it will take to change a student's trajectory takes much more than a year. It takes four years to get to this point. And so that's our current reality, but we hope with the four or five-year graduation marks, we'll be able to make some demonstrable improvements. And the state has actually acknowledged that as well in giving schools who are in receivership an opportunity to define the baseline data. Again, for us, it was 19% and then make targets based on that. I have two yellow bars highlighted here. On the top, I just pulled out the global. The bar on the far left are the regions exams, math, English, science, global, and US. If you look at global, for students in the total cohort, that means every student who came into East at ninth grade, you'll see that 46% of the students have not taken the global exam yet. That's what we inherited. That exam is typically given in 10th grade or 11th grade. 10th grade in suburbs, I think 11th grade here for those students. And so it's impossible to have kids graduate when they haven't taken the required exams. And the bottom chart shows the active cohort. These are the kids who still remain at East or the kids who have not dropped out. And so you see there are over 110 students who enter in ninth grade who are no longer sitting in our seats. And so this is not unique to East. The dropout rates in the past in the city destroys any chance of having a graduation rate that exceed 50%. And this is our target for our ninth graders coming in, something that we hold true moving forward. Marking period three data, it's also important to note that we are tracking every student by face and name, and we're having individual meetings with students to make sure they understand their graduation trajectory. This chart, there's a lot on here, and I know, but I want to give you as much data to chew on it as you would like. The top two boxes illustrate the number of students who were held back at the beginning of ninth grade. The retention data means that students did not acquire six credits to move from grades nine to 10. And so last year, about 50% of students did not acquire six credits at East, and they repeated ninth grade again. Currently, we have about 32% of students who will either have no classes pass, one, or possibly two. These charts do not equal, do not add up evenly because it does not include the elective courses, art, music, PE, those are other credits that students have an opportunity to obtain as well. Again, a lot of data here, but I wanted you to kind of see how we're tracking the data by face and name, tracking it by the core classes. The core classes are math, science, English, and social studies, and then physical education, that's what is, has the, it's labeled PE on this chart. Attendance and behavior. We are still very proud of our attendance for grades six through eight. You see, we have attendance rates of 95, 93, and 87%. In eighth grade, the students who are not attending, our students who are overage, we have about 25 students who are turning 16 or 17 this year, and they have not been attending school as much as we would like. My daughter is 13 years old, and she's entering eighth grade next year, and I honestly couldn't imagine my 13-year-old being in a classroom with an 18-year-old. But it is our current reality, and something that we're addressing through multiple measures, having double English, double periods of English and math, as well as offering extra academic support for those students as well, for all students, but particularly those students. Student behavior is another chart that I wanted to share with the board this evening. If you look at the far right column, you look at total suspensions. This time last year, there were approximately 2,500 total suspensions at East, and for the current year, we're about 760 suspensions. I think it's 760 too many, but some students do make poor choices. In this column, the dates, the data you really want to look at are the students who are out of school suspended. And 986 suspended out of school this time last year, 148 this year. I truly believe that the restorative practice measures that we've trained our staff in implementing and the work that they're doing with our counselors and social workers is having a tremendous impact on the students' willingness to stay in school and our ability to keep them there. And then the school budget. I know that there has been a lot of debate about East and how much money we're spending and taking from other schools, and I would reject that notion time and time again, but I wanted to give some information about this year's budget to those who are unfamiliar. We have spent the money that was allocated to East on many instructional operational programs. This is not an all-inclusive list, but highlights some of the things that we did this year that are unique. We addressed some of the music art technology needs. If you've ever been in our auditorium, it's very hard to hear a school play, you can't hear the speaker. We upgraded some systems there. We actually bought digital cameras for our digital photography class. We bought Chromebooks for students and a bunch of other technology needs. The CTE program has enhancements. We upgraded our kitchen equipment for our culinary program. We are in the process of getting a mobile lab that was housed at MCC to be placed on our campus next week as we enhance our health and services CTE track. We've also paid extra attention to the arts. They had broken kilns and didn't have adequate equipment, and so we want to make sure that our arts programs are also attractive to students and have the supplies and materials needed. As you know, we included, we enhanced our programs by having 60 kids this year or so, partaking driver's ed to get their license, digital media upgrades, and we also did a safety and security audit last year when I was doing the audit of the building. We noticed a lot of students leaving the building from back doors that weren't alarmed. So we alarmed all the buildings. We added, we added, upgraded the digital cameras in the building so we can better track and monitor students outside the building and inside the building, which has led to less kids leaving school without permission, which is, and actually probably hurt the area businesses who were benefiting from them leaving midday. And then the last slide I want to just highlight here, these are some of our projected projects, projected savings for this year. If you look at the budget across and salaries that we estimated for staff, there are some staff we did not hire because we had decreasing enrollment. We were really efficient with our operations, to tune about 100, they paid about $800,000. And then receivership funds, so we are, at the end of this year, giving back to the district, it's your money, about $5.5 million. This does not include state reimbursement on transportation and other measures, so that number will probably clip $6 million that will go, that will be returned to the district at the end of this year for the EPO. So I want to make sure the community knows we have been fiscally prudent and responsive, we have not overspent, we try to be as money-conscious as possible to help balance the budget for the district. We are part of the district. At the same time, make sure we address some of the most critical needs in program and safety and security. And I also want to just mention while I'm here before questions. I have two individuals I want to acknowledge in the back. Eric Robinson, who's ready to stand or raise your hand, biggie. Eric is our new athletic director at East, so I want to welcome him. He's on the board, he's our new, yet. He's on the board packet tonight for vote. And Tanya Wilson, who's sitting next to Marlene Black, our principal, is on the board for our lower school principal.
I have a couple of questions myself. In terms of the graduation projections, that page indicates 22.7, which would probably meet the state's targets for performance improvements. But that, that number could go higher if you look at the next set of numbers down, right? Is that right?
Absolutely. That's why I said I want to make sure that we are, these are, these are numbers that are working. This is not a final number, but I know the request was to give more data and our progress. I wanted to do that, and we are tracking, I mean, literally, our monitors, every kid by face and name. We look at every single student transcript. We spent the last two leadership meetings with our principals pulling random transcripts, and I got to tell you, there are some things that we're noticing, historic things for seniors who maybe placed wrong classes with their freshman or sophomore year, and we're trying to address those while also preventing it from happening to the freshmen who are entering this year.
And then the second question I had, and you can give me a short answer on this. It looks like your attendance at grades 10, 11, and 12 is pretty low. I mean, you'd think 83, 86, 83% is, is good in the classroom, but actually, it's a pretty miserable number for attendance. What, what, what do you do in those cases? That's a very low number. What efforts? Can you summarize your efforts?
Absolutely.
Do you call parents? Do you robocalls? What are you doing with this?
We have a full-time attendance person as well as a family and community engagement, someone who lives from the University of Rochester to do that work. We visit probably 15 houses a day, and we try to get out. We are out banging on doors. I've done that myself, met with parents, and trying to find out first, why aren't students coming? In some cases, they have, you know, family issues that we try to help mitigate with school. Other times, students have either moved, they've been incarcerated, but I would agree with you. When you hit grades 11 and 12, that attendance rate should be over, should be nearly, near 100%.
Yeah.
You made it over the critical hurdle, and you should be there. But students, I mean, it is different than last year. It's increased since last year, but it's far, it's far too few. And I would tell you that when you talk to students, it's a culture that they're used to. They are used to coming when they want and not being held accountable, and we're trying to change that. And I would also say that there are many students who are re-engaging. On that same slide, you look on the right, and you see 38% of kids at Freedom School. And some would say, only 38%? That's horrible. These are kids who had 0% attendance last year. These are kids who were dropped out for multiple years. These are kids who are going back to get their GED or their task equivalent, and so 38% to me is a huge accomplishment for kids who didn't come at all last year. And the same could be said for the Quest kids. These are kids who, the criteria to get in the Quest is you had to have zero GPA. These are kids who did nothing for two years academically. And so, but we couldn't forget about those kids. We had to re-engage them as well. They are far off the graduation number like that. We're going to get deemed for them no matter what, but, but this number is important because this is a life, like we have to get them out with some type of credential. And if it's a GED, or it takes six years to graduate, that becomes important because the opposite is not a kind of reality.
One other comment, I'll be very brief. This report dispels two notions. One, that East was gobbling up all the money and not giving it back. I think that's important to clarify that. And then the other notion that I think is out there, false notion is out there, is that East got rid of all the troubled, challenged students, and you can just see by that, by this data, that that is not true. But you found creative ways to, to deal with that.
Right, and I would say most of the money that we spent for receivership went to the students who were off track. And so, and of course, I heard, I heard the same rumors about us hand-selecting students, and that's
Right.
far from the truth.
Right, right. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Mr. President. So the East high grad rate for 2015 was 33.3%. Do you project that that number is going to exceed 2015 graduation rate?
I would not promise that at all, Commissioner. I would tell you that it is our goal to exceed that, but when you have a starting point of 19%, getting to 33% becomes difficult, nearly double what the rate was in January.
Well, and, and we can have an argument about this. When we didn't have an EPO, we graduated 33% of the students. Now that we have EPO with all of these resources, we can't get, we can't exceed 33%?
I think that's a generalization. I believe that the graduation rate starts in ninth grade. EPO is there for a year. And so for any senior, if you go to the chart here, for any of the seniors who have not taken the adequate courses when they should have in freshman, junior, or senior year, they're not going to pass four regions in one year, if they have even taken a course. So if you look at this chart here, you have seniors who have not even taken the required courses or exams they should have taken by their sophomore or junior year. So, I mean, to be honest with you, if anyone can do that, I would question, I would question their ethical attempt in doing so.
Oh, I, I'm not going to let you, I'm not going to let you get with that. That's, that's not, I'm not going to let you slide with that because
That's true.
No, I don't believe that. You all have a ton of money, and we still can't do it. Which says to me, money is not the issue. And that's, I'll leave it at that. But don't, don't say that, because I don't believe that to be true. I believe, I can believe that if you get, if you really do get the right kind of structure in there, that it could be at least exceed, with all the resources that you have, at least higher than that. You don't have as many kids as they had prior to the EPO.
And let me just repeat, because the kids drop out, they're still counting against you in the graduation rate. And so you have over 100 kids who aren't even in school, so you can't
Too much money is being spent, Sean, too much money.
I will tell you that the data that we see in grades six, seven, and eight, we have double English and math, where kids are making a lot of gains in those, in those measures. The attendance of six, seven, and eight is there. The number of freshmen who are moving to 10th grade is proof that the money that's spent is being well-spent and is impacting the majority of kids. The kids that we struggle with are the kids who have been victimized by this system for many, many years.
So, so what would you project as the graduation rate?
I would tell you that with the freshman class, I would expect us to be well over 60%.
This year, I'm talking about this year.
For this year, I would tell you we'd probably be close to 30% based on the exams that kids have not taken, and we cannot educate kids who are disappearing off the books. They're not here.
Well, the question is, I think everybody will agree, only time will tell. The question is whether the time is this June or August, or next June or the following year. And it's for the entire Board of Education to make that assessment. The operative phrase here is time. What is that time that you need? And, and the other thing is, we don't know. I appreciate the fact that you've, I would say, lowballed when you say 22.7, and other administrations have done that. That's not unusual, and that's a safe thing to do. I just want folks to know that that 22.7 is at the bare minimum of what is going to happen at East High School. It could be higher. It could be 31%. It could be 33. It could be 36. We don't know. And our hope and prayer is, and our understanding is, that they're working on that. I mean, Dr. Nelms described the efforts, digging really deep, drilling really deep, speaking to the students, making sure that they are going to get across that finish line if they possibly can do that. And one of the ways to do that is, as interim Superintendent Simmons has done, and her staff has done, is you drill down. And so the efforts that are taking place at East are also taking place at central office as well.
Well, let me just, let me just, and this is my last thought. One of the things I know for sure is that when you have the University of Rochester involved in this, and you have the nation looking in on this EPO, and we are performing this minimally, it doesn't speak very well to all the resources that have been put in the school. Now, maybe it's going to take two or three more years, but it's too many resources, human and financial and others, for us to have such a low graduation rate. And as you, as you mentioned, it may be higher, these are just preliminary numbers, but at the same time, it doesn't seem like we're going to move the needle the way in which, you know, people in the community thought, had hoped that we may get this needle moved because you've got all the resources. And at least for right now, it says to me that even though you have the resources, and I've been saying this all along, even though you have the resources, you have people making a zillion dollars around here, it still does not mean that they're going to graduate, they're going to graduate our students and make our students' career in college ready. So I'll just leave it at that.
And let me just say, I think the debate is premature. I mean, people acting like the decision has already been made, that kids are not wearing the robes, nothing's happened yet, right? Let's see what happens in June, let's see what happens in August, and we'll have a discussion about resources at that time.
I agree, and I'll just jump in here, too. Thank you for your honesty, and thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Adams?
No, I just wanted to, to make sure that, you know, there's not this confusion about the graduation data, because when you have somebody starting, I mean, graduation is a culmination of a number of credits and a number of past tests, and if you start at the beginning of a year, there's only so much that can be done in that year for those students. I just want clarity on that. So you can't expect, if, if, if the maximum absolute those students. I just want clarity on that. So, you can't expect, if the maximum absolute possible constraint is 30 percent, but it's likely 19 percent, you can't project 50 percent. I just want clarity on that. That doesn't mean that three years from now, we can't expect much, much better. But it's just, it's a false, it's a false criticism to say that you want the graduation rate to be higher when it was constrained at the beginning of the year and could not go beyond a certain amount. And I do want to, you know, recognize the very significant suspension reduction. And that's, you know, we need to learn from that. And, you know, find out what, you know, how to sustain that and how that can help inform other efforts throughout the district.
Commissioner Cruz?
A real quick comment. I think, thank you for your efforts and your staff's efforts. And I agree with Mary. I think that the numbers, you know, show up tremendous decline, and that's great, great stuff. But I'm also hearing from your presentation that you were a little surprised about the baseline. I think what you're saying is that the baseline, at one point, when you came into this whole project, was thinking that the baseline was here. And then now you're realizing that the baseline is actually way down here. So, now you're making that kind of deficit. You're trying to make that part up just to get back to where you think you were. So, I appreciate that as well. And I think it's a, it's not, it's a very difficult process to try and turn around a school. And I think at least, I guess my question to you is, how confident are you now with understanding where you are with the baseline?
Absolutely.
Is it? Is this, is this the bottom floor? Is this the foundation of where you're going to jump off from? And I think that is going to be helpful now going forward for you.
Yeah. I will tell you that we would not be here next year with the same, with another decline. When the baseline, we, I mean, to move from 46 to, to think that's 46 when you enter and have 19 percentage of reality is a significant drop. You're not talking about three or four percentage points. And I want to say, like, the teachers and the staff are working extremely hard to address every single kid. And I haven't seen a staff work this hard in any place I've worked in. And I am confident that now that we have accurate data, that our students and staff can better target their efforts.
Well, I would just say that, and I appreciate you saying that your teachers are working hard, the staff is working hard. But hard doesn't necessarily mean that they're effective. And so, I think that's what we have to determine. Are they effective? And so, I'll just leave it at that. But you need to know, I'm going to keep the pressure on, because we put too much money into this school for it not to succeed. And we've got U of R as a partner. I don't want to be embarrassed with the U of R that we're not educating these kids. And let me just say this, and I'll be quiet. But most of the people that work in that school, their children don't go to school there. And I would argue that if their children went to school there, we'll see different results. And I'll leave it there.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Nelmes.
Thank you.
We look forward to further reports.
All right.
All right. Interim Superintendent Simmons?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few pieces of information. Oh, thank you. First of all, we had yesterday, thanks to a concerted effort here, 460 of our graduating seniors were at a Bright Futures Job and Career Fair at the Blue Cross Arena. There were guaranteed, I believe it was 467 jobs available at that fair, if I have that correctly. And I was over there. I saw President White there. There were many others there. Deputy Bivard had a major role in planning and implementing this fair. And it was really heartwarming to see all these seniors come in. Some of them, you know, dressed for their interviews, others collecting information related to jobs, having their resumes prepared, and basically being very optimistic about their chances of gaining employment right here in town. So, it was a, it was a really great event. More students attended than last year. And I would think that in the future, there would be even more. Another, just a reminder, I think everyone is aware now, it's on our website, but just to make available that from June 22 through June 26, we will hold all of our graduations. I personally will be at as many as I can possibly be at. And other Central Office staff and board members will also join me at all of these graduations. And we will be, we're very excited about watching our seniors who are graduating and moving on. So, that, just a reminder on that. Today was the May attendance blitz. And as we were finishing our work, going door-to-door and speaking with parents about the final month of school and making sure that students, we were doing everything we could to support families to get their students to school. We also, through Jerome Underwood, had a very extensive report. And I just wanted to show you that, you know, last year, 14, 15, you can see there was a great decrease in the number of students who were chronically absent. We have stopped looking at average daily attendance and instead zero in on the number of students who attend school less than 90 percent of the time, looking at their absenteeism as chronic. That's the national standard and what we've been encouraged to do. And that's exactly what this district is doing. And we, you can see overall, that in most areas, we have reduced just a bit. But we're reducing the number of chronically absent students. Last year, there were about 1,100 students whose chronic absenteeism, I'll say their chronic absenteeism decreased, their attendance in school increased. And we believe there are about 300 more this year that will be, those students are maintaining. And we have about 300 more, based on the attendance blitz and all the efforts being made at schools to support families to get their students and our students to school. So, great kudos to Jerome Underwood for his efforts and all of those people, both from Central Office, from our schools. We had a huge group today from the Monroe County, Monroe County workers. And altogether, we visited, I don't know how many, but many homes. Summer learning is coming up. We have 50 programs, almost 50 programs running this summer. We will be serving approximately 10,000 to 11,000 students. Registration has closed, and we're getting ready for that. But we're happy to announce that we have a full program and full complement of programs coming up for this summer. So, we, once again, are looking to reduce that summer learning loss and have students be involved in worthwhile activities. And speaking of worthwhile activities, we hope everyone here this evening, those listening, those streaming in, whatever, will attend our Family Affair in the Park on Saturday, June 4, on Terryo Beach Park, 10:30 to 3:00. It's a family day. And there'll be lots and lots of fun things to do for students and children of all ages and for adults. Our Office of Parent Engagement sponsors this event. And I think we'll all be there and enjoying it and enjoying the day with our families. Hopefully, it won't rain and rain out like it did for the baseball game today. But please, put that on your calendars and join us on the family day. And finally, just another, actually, this morning, between 8:30 and 10:30, part of the collaboration on the Urban Suburban Program is evolving through a state grant to where students from the suburbs will be able, on a seats-available basis, and with a minimum number of seats. But for those programs where there are available seats that students in our district have not signed up for, we will be offering advanced manufacturing and engineering, construction, architecture and design, culinary arts, digital media, arts and communication, precision optics, teaching and learning, and vision care, either at Edison Tech or at East High School. So, that is ongoing. I want to thank everyone involved with that. And that is my report for this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I got a letter, two letters today from the New York State School Boards Association. And they happen to be in honor of the person sitting to my left and the person sitting to my right for their participation in school board professional development. And Dr. Liz Hallmark, Liz, one of them is for you, for achieving your 75, 75 points towards your master's in school board participation. And for President White, he has received Level 3, which is the Board Mastery Award for getting 250 points.
Finally got my masters.[1176.66][1176.66][laughter]
And here's your, your recognition. So, let's join me.
Round of applause for both of you.[1184.66][1184.66][applause]
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
We can just start down here.
Is summer school firmly closed to enrollment?
It is. May 20 was the deadline. We do have, we are still allowing some bilingual student signups, because the letter went out a little later than the others. But generally, most programs are filling, are full. If you want any other detail, I'd have to look at Dr. Otua to see if she had anything else she might want to say. That's...
Yeah. Superintendent Simmons, a couple of questions. We, you spoke about attendance. We tend to have sometimes 14,000 suspensions. And I think I'd asked this question before, before your tenure. The question becomes, in terms of those students that are suspended, it seems we want to recruit them on the front end, but we suspend them on the back end. And so, how does, and maybe this is something for the next superintendent, but how does suspensions impact the attendance rate?
Well, obviously, it has a great impact, and it is included in the numbers. So, for students who are suspended once or more than once and are out of school, whether it's short or long term, that's part of their, you know, that, unless they're at a program, if they're in a long-term program, that obviously their, their attendance counts there. But if they miss school, you know, we can, it is considered in the numbers.
Yeah. I do, I do tend to think that there should be some analysis done on that. Because, you know, my position is, is that we want them to be in attendance, but then we're suspending them. Now, that may be a wrong hypothesis, but I'd like to see the data in order to be able to determine if my hypothesis is true or not. And we don't tend to get that kind of, that kind of data. Secondly, with regard...
May I just ask, what is your question, so we can get the right data for you?
Does the attendance, does suspensions impact attendance and by how much?
Okay.
And if we're talking about attendance, should that really drive us to, in addition to the Code of Conduct, should that drive us to look more critically at suspending our students?
It is connected to the, you know, to the whole philosophy behind the Code of Conduct and trying to maintain students in school, de-escalate, maintain students, have places for them and personnel for them to be able to deal with when there are issues that they bring to school. So, yes, they're certainly connected, and there is an impact. And it is, it is part of what the efforts that we're making now through the code and before the code will hopefully reduce that number.
And just in terms of the suspend, we've got a, some raw data about suspension. And for me, it needs to have more of a critical analysis. Like, it really doesn't tell me about, you know, what are the, you know, what recommendations are we making in order to reduce the number of suspensions? You know, I look at Edison, and they've got 926 total suspensions. It doesn't tell us what's being done to address that. I mean, we just have this raw data without limited, with limited information. We don't know what the data was from last year, what's the trend, you know, if that number is going up over time or going down over time. We just don't have that kind of critical data, I think, that we need in order to be able to develop policy like we need to develop policy. And then my last question is around summer school. Is there data available for last year that will inform this year? The question becomes, and I don't know it, maybe my colleagues know it, was the summer, the 19, excuse me, the 2015 summer school effective? Do we see that in terms of academic achievement? Now, we don't have that data. So, I'd like to have that data. And it would seem to me that if we knew, if there is an evaluation of the summer school, that it would help us to inform what we're doing this year. I just don't know.
There, we can provide that to you. We have provided it.
We got it in the ESA.
Yeah, in the ESA committee. And we can provide that to the full board to show the, basically, it's the reduction of summer learning loss that we're looking at. And we can provide that data to the full board. And it's a...
Do you all remember the numbers?
Yeah. I think basically, they said, and you all can correct me, that there was no loss. That's where the gain was. Typically, you see loss.
Yeah, we have that recently.
Summer learning loss.
And there wasn't the loss.
And it is, it is...
Is that right?
For many, for many students, that attendant, just like during the year, there is a high correlation between attendance in summer school and prevention of summer learning loss. So, for students who actually do attend the program in the same way as during the school year, that summer learning loss is definitely prevented. If they attend littler or, you know, little, then their result is different.
Can I just...
I wanted to keep on moving down, but go ahead, Mary. Real quick.
No, just real quick, I wanted to say that the suspension data, Vice President Elliott, this is the data that we get with every board meeting. That was, there's a long-term follow-up from an audit committee request to have this provided. So, there's been other, like, analysis and analytic data in different settings. But this we get every time as a...
So, you say that to say what?
Per our request. It's satisfying our request.
Yeah, but I'd like to have some...
Right. I understand. But it's not meant to be more than that. This, we get this consistently, which is, I appreciate that we do.
Okay. Commissioner Powell, I thought you had...
Yes, I did have a comment. On page seven of your PowerPoint, you have, it talks about Edison Tech in the context of CTE programs in the suburban eighth graders. The optics, perhaps, aren't as good as one might hope. The lower-left corner, the kids are all smiling and happy, but what's behind them? Empty, empty bookshelves. And that may, it may be appropriate today that our kids are learning using the internet. But if that, the optics of that image is not something I would widely circulate.
I'm sure there's an explanation, and I can provide it, but I don't have that answer at my fingertips. It could be just it's a section in the library that's got different types of materials and not the regular shelves. But I don't know the answer to that.
Right. It's just one of those things we need to think about when we're putting together images.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, there's really only one person talking at a time. And right now, that is Mr. Evans.
Just let me, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say, but I like to end on a high note. I want to thank Adele Bivard and her team for this diversity of opportunity education partnership. I know Commissioner Powell's focusing on the picture. But allow me to focus on the comments that I got from several people today who called me, who said, "I'm amazed at the facilities that you have in the district. I'm amazed at the quality of some of the programs that you have. And I really hope that you guys spend more time talking about what you have instead of spending what you don't have." And I know we spend so much time doing that. So, just allow me to thank them for that event today. And also, Madam Superintendent, for the Family Affair event that's coming up. That event has been a long-running success in this district. And we've had thousands of families come through that last year, the previous year. And I'm hoping that it will be again this year. So, I want to thank the staff that is working on the district-wide parent event, and thank Adele Bivard and her folks for this diversity of opportunity education partnership event, which people maybe outside of the district are recognizing more than sometimes people in the district are recognizing some of the, some of the good programs that we have. I think this district, we get beat down so much that we spend so much time talking about all the problems we have. But this is, this is an example of people that came from outside the district and saw what we had. And unfortunately, I think that that's what it takes sometimes for us to be able to get a little bit of energy, to have a little bit of hope in order to move forward in a positive way. So, thank you to those two departments that put together, that are putting together the event that will be next Saturday, and the folks that put together the diversity of opportunity education partnership that took place, I believe it was, was that today? That took place today.
Any other comments? Okay. Let's move on to our reports. Our student rep is not here. Is our rep from the Parent Advisory Council here? No? We'll try to get that in writing to each board member.
Mr. President, just a quick question. Our student rep, Savion, we haven't seen him in a couple of meetings. Are we up for a new, who's in charge of PAC? I mean, I mean, the Student Advisory Council. Who's running that now from the district side?
Jerome.
So, Mr. Underwood, I don't know if you're here. If you can give us an update on where our, and if our student rep, if we're getting a new student rep this year, or what's happening with the student rep. Whoever is over that, if we can make sure that we're getting full representation... getting full representation from our students.
He's a senior, so.
I know he's a senior, so he's, so he's gone. Yeah, yeah, please.
So, Jerome wasn't here to speak to this. I know he has worked with the student rep, and it will cultivate someone for next year. Savion is a senior and is moving on. So, I did see him. He, he has enjoyed the time that he has interacted, and he's, he's worked with Student Congress a little bit, but it's been a little tough to get him here to these meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I might suggest that, given the difficulties of having one person responsible, maybe, maybe it's a way of getting two people.
Right.
Two reps, so that you have one as an alternate. So, if the first person can't come, there's always going to be somebody here, because I think there's a lot of critical information that we get the feedback from, but more importantly, they take back to the, to, to the other students. So, you might want to think of having an alternate position to help that person out.
Thank you. Let's do our standing committee reports. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, thank you. A very brief report. Tonight's agenda, Resolution 766, the Policy 1222, the booster organizations, is on the agenda for a vote. We have two items for discussion, the Code of Conduct. The plan is that we will have a committee meeting of the whole on June 2nd, and that that would be an opportunity for full discussion. The plan devised in part to make sure we could get through tonight's meeting quickly. We could do the same with the multicultural global education, or we can discuss that tonight under new business. It's the pleasure of the board. But the normal process would be for us to discuss that tonight under.
New business.
New and old business.
Yep.
A regular scheduled meeting was set aside in order for other board business to take place. So, our next standing meeting, aside from July, June 2nd, would be July 14th.
Thank you, Chairman Powell. Chairman Hallmark?
The Governance Committee met on May 17th, and we were looking at, met as a committee of the whole to discuss an online superintendent evaluation tool. What we've used in the past, our paper, is a paper tool that's, could be improved. So, we're looking at a product that could streamline the process, and we're going to meet again on June 7th for further discussion and a decision around this tool. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hallmark. Vice President Elliott?
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee did not meet the next meeting we will have in June, and that will be posted. But just a point of personal privilege, Mr. President, just want to also say that I participate, as well as some of my colleagues, in Dr. DeGru's training. Those, you may have heard some of us talk about her even before her coming here. Dr. DeGru is the author of Post-Dramatic Slave Syndrome, and that we believe that it's still, it's pervasive. The, the effects of slavery is still in effect today, some 400 years later, and that, and also, it touches our educational system, and so she has been working with us on putting a kind of structure in place to address issues around race. So, it was a very good session, and I was glad to be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Evans?
Per our previous conversations, my report will be submitted as, as written. The only thing I will add out, add, because I know we still want to, we still should try to stay on the timeframe so we can get over to the baseball game, even though it's not happening today. So, still move the meeting along. We, we had three items. We discussed the feasibility study and recommendations of a special military advisory committee about establishing a military academy in the district, and there's a resolution before you for the adoption of new textbooks for 60 bilingual classrooms. That's Resolution 773 in your packet that passed, and is forwarded to you for consideration tonight. And then, we got a presentation from school regarding a partnership between School 33 and East High School for a purpose-built community. The rest of this report will be posted to Board Docs, so you can read it for your, at your leisure. And the next board meeting, the next committee meeting will be Thursday, June 9th, following the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on Thursday, May the 19th. We considered a number of resolutions and a couple of late ones. We received the Finance Committee report, and I put forth a motion to accept the finance, the financial report for April 2016.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We have also resolutions with recommendations this evening, Resolution 746 for procurement of supplies, 747 to 761 for facilities, and 762 for information management and technology. We had a discussion regarding two late submissions. One was to amend the agreement from, with this City of Rochester with regard to the Joint Schools Construction Board. That, we went through a number of questions, a number of concerns, and that is for allowing us to get into Phase 2 facilities modernization. And then, the second resolution was requesting the board, the fund, the remodeling board was requesting some advanced funding to take care of their work in anticipation of the bonds that are going to be sold later this year. And in order for them to keep their operations going, we've also approved those. We are submitting those to you this evening with full, with committee recommendations as well. And our next meeting is June 9th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Adams?
The Audit Committee, Committee met today with Fried Maxick, the board's external auditor, to review the audit plan for the financial audit for the year ending June 30th, 2016. The Committee discussed the plan and reviewed the timelines for receiving the audit results. Preliminary fieldwork has already occurred, and the final audit work will take place in September 2016. One new development that will impact the 2016 audit is the new uniform guidance for federal awards. The Auditor General is reviewing our current policies and protocols to determine if required changes in the areas of conflict of interest, procurement, and time reporting are addressed. If policy changes are required, the board will likely need to fast-track changes for the, for this year's end. The Committee is planning to meet with Fried Maxick on Tuesday, December 6th at 5:45 PM to review the final results of the 2016 Rochester City School District audit. All board members are invited to attend. We will be having audit committee meetings before that date, but that is the, the next follow-up with the external auditor. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the Fried Maxick audit plan?
Move it. Moved and seconded by Vice President Elliott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Very briefly, I wanted to report what many of you already know. We lost a member of the Rochester School District family. Her name is Caroline Anthony. She was a secretary at Number 42 School. As is always the case when you lose a family member, it makes us a little weaker, but through prayer and through collective support, I'm sure the folks at 42 and those that knew Ms. Anthony well will get through this. So, again, if you know the family, Ms. Anthony's family, please send them, tell them the board and the entire community are praying for them. On the better news, I would like to reiterate my joy, if you will, at the turnout at the Blue Cross Arena the other day. I did happen to swing by. Interim Superintendent Simmons and I actually crossed paths. It was a beautiful day outside, but it was even more beautiful inside. See all those young people coming in, some, many of them with suits and ties, and all those employers. I know a couple of people in my family that are looking for work. I know they would have been very envious of all the employers. I mean, there were some serious jobs there, at serious companies. So, to Keith, I think we had a hand in it, and Adele, the, the name of the program was Bright Futures, and it really was very bright in there. It was brighter outside, but really bright inside, because these young people were looking good, and I think they were feeling like they had some good opportunities. So, I'll limit my report to that. Oh, and, and I should say, kudos to Mary, Commissioner Adams, the task force. We should not forget Dr. Vargas's role in the Code of Conduct and the rollout of that. He was instrumental. The Greater Rochester Area Community Foundation. We really are just getting started, and I would say, I think the hard work is really about to begin. And I know Commissioner Adams and the many people that were involved had a tough time putting together a pretty comprehensive instrument document that will allow us to address some of these issues that Vice President Elliott and so many other people are concerned about in terms of our kids being in school. So, again, she doesn't like to take credit for it. She's always, when you always recognize her, she says, "No, no, no, I'm one of many people," and we know that. We know that a lot of people were involved in that, but Commissioner Adams, we thank you for taking on that very difficult work, very difficult subject matter, and on occasion, challenging relationships to make that happen. So, we don't do this a lot with ourselves, but we can all give ourselves a collective pat on the back for having Mary, and you all can applaud for her good work. Thank you, Mary. That was, that was tough work. All right, let's get down to the real nitty-gritty here, the consideration of resolutions. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolutions 707 through 718? It's been moved by Commissioner
Powell.
Powell, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any discussions or questions regarding those resolutions? All right, then, all those in favor, Resolutions 707 to 718, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Notice 707, 711, and 718.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. And as we do that, we should, you got, you guys may have noticed that we have a different clerk today. Francis is substituting for, Francine, I don't know what I said, Francis.
Get it right.
Francine, I talked to her all the time. Francine is going to be our clerk going forward once Shanae leaves us to have her two children, and Francine is super efficient, if you all don't know that. So, I don't think we're going to miss you, Shanae.
Oh.
He did.
Zing.
That's when the earrings come off.
Our heads start to move.
That's when the earrings come off. The head goes.
She knows, she knows, she, she knows we love her, so. And let me tell you something. She zings us as much as we zing her, so. All right.
Shanae, your favorite, your favorite commissioners?
Yeah.
Can't wait for you to get back.
All right, let's see. Resolution 719 has to be discussed in executive session, so we'll skip forward to 720, 740. Can I get a motion to discuss those resolutions?
Some.
Been moved by Commissioner Hallmark and seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
President, what? I'd like to request 730 be discussed briefly.
Yes, actually, I should have picked that up. You're right. Let's exclude Resolution 730 from that. That has to be discussed in executive session, since there's a question about it. So, what we're talking about is Resolutions 720 to 729 and 731 through 740. So, is there a motion to discuss those? Let's get it right. Commissioner Powell, thank you, and seconded by Commissioner Cruz. All right, any other discussion regarding those resolutions? 720 to 729, 731 to 740. There being no further discussions, all those in favor of those resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
Notice 721 and 723.
Francine, did you record that? All right. All right, let's move on to Resolutions 741 through 745, additional pay resolutions. Are there motion?
Move it.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding those additional pay resolutions? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolutions 741 to 745, say aye.
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 Any opposition?
Notice 741 through 744.
All right, let's move on to Resolution 746, procurement and supplies. Are there motion? I'm sorry?
Um, you know, I'm, I...
Thank you, Shanae.
What, what resolution was that?
That was 746.
Is that the one that's official?
I have one.
No, that's not the one.
Is there anybody else who has one?
744.
I don't have one of those.
No, it's me.
744.
I have one.
You do?
745.
763.
Oh, we're not there yet. 763. All right. So, thank you, Madam Clerk. Did you record my abstention on that one?
Yes.
Thank you, Francine. Okay, so, we are on Resolution 747 to 761, educational facilities. Are there motion?
Did we do 746?
Yes, we did, and I abstained from that. Right?
Wait, no, you don't have to abstain.
You abstained from 744.
744.
Oh, okay. All right, get me back on track here. So, we just, we voted for 741 to 745. I apologize. Now, we're on, thank you, 746. Can I get a motion to discuss 746?
Some.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any questions or comments regarding that resolution? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor, Resolution 746, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, now, we can move on to 747 to 761. Can I get a motion?
Move it.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
Just that all of these have gone through the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of educational facilities, Resolution 747 to 761, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, those resolutions have passed. 762, information and management and technology. Any motion to discuss that resolution?
Move it.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by, come on, Commissioner Hallmark, get it in there.
Second it.
All right, there we go. Any questions or comments regarding 762?
Just my only comment is, is that if this, if this can happen, this would be absolutely excellent for the City of Rochester in terms of access to so many folks in our neighborhoods to broadband access. So, I really hope that this will pan out.
I did have a question around this, though, as I was reading this. So, so how does that, if we have free internet, is it only for our students? I think I saw in the resolution where businesses may have to pay if they wanted to participate in it. But what does that do, like, for companies like Time Warner that offers Wi-Fi, and are we, is it re-in competition with them? And, you know, those kinds of scenarios, have we thought through those scenarios? Or is this a question that somebody has to get back to me on? Because I, I really have not heard that conversation.
Right, Anne Marie Lerner is our expert, and she is not here tonight, but I told her I would fill in for her.
Those questions, okay.
She has been talking to all of the companies, and there is opportunity for them to, in a different way, get revenue and build business. This will give access to anyone, a certain level of access. So, our students, it will benefit our students, because when they have their devices, and when we get to that point where they're taking devices home with them, they'll be able to extend their education with these devices 24/7.
So, would I be able to access a given and forego my Time Warner internet?
To, it only goes to a certain level.
Speed limited.
It's limited. So, and there is opportunity for all of the companies to benefit from this in the way that we package it. So, Anne Marie can give you lots of specifics. She's very knowledgeable.
Well, as long as these questions have been considered, I'm okay with it.
Yes, and ongoing discussions with everyone involved.
Yeah, I, I've been at some of those meetings, and what she's talked about is, you know, you're only going to get a certain speed with this internet access, and so you can purchase packages that will get it faster. But everybody will be entitled to that level of service. So, it's pretty exciting stuff. I think Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner...
And when does it go into effect?
Well, I don't think there's a date yet.
There's an application that's been placed at the state, so we're waiting word from them. But it's, I mean, the initial plan is done, and it's open to the state, so we're just waiting on word from them.
Yeah. And I, we've, we've referenced it before, but, you know, we talk about the organization here in Rochester and the people that support us, and we don't talk enough about the various talent and commitment that exists in this organization. And Anne Marie Schop, of which, of course, is supervised by Adele and other folks, they do a great job. They got us on the cutting edge of technology, which is where, how we gather our data. And we've got a great team there, and we appreciate their good work. And I've been blessed and fortunate to go to Commissioner Cruz's meetings and hear all this good stuff, and it's really exciting stuff, so we look forward to that coming to fruition. All right, 763 to 77...
We got a vote on 764.
Oh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, Resolution 762, say aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, so, can I get a resolution to discuss 763 to 774?
Move it.
Been moved and seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Powell?
Now, what numbers did you call?
763 to 774. You did want to...
Yeah, I think I'm staying it on that one.
And what, 63?
763, right?
Okay.
Is that one?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding those resolutions, Commissioner Powell?
Just to note that this does include the passage of our booster organizations policy that's been under discussion for some months.
And I, and I'm glad you said that, Commissioner Powell. I, I mean, my, my concerns, we're satisfied with this booster policy, but I will tell you that we, I want, we need to make sure that we monitor this. Like, we need to be on it like flies to... to, we get it, we get it, we get it. How about honey? Yeah, bees to honey, because I, so it's important, I think, that we do want folks to be able to help the district from, from the booster standpoint, but I want to make sure that it's something that is done in a way that reflects integrity and that there are, that is done in a way that's ethically and will make us all proud. So, I am satisfied with the language that's in there and I'm hoping that it will be able to be an effective tool to really support our sports organizations. You hear that, Carlos? Is he here? No.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution 770, we are in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Packet.
Yep.
Resolutions, this is, we were at School 41 a couple, a few weeks ago, or last week or the week before, but I've been, over the years, have been going to School 41 on a number of serious issues that are over there around race. And so, and let me just say, it's one of the most racist schools in our district. And so, I'm glad to see that the leadership over there and the principal is trying to help to turn that around, but it is one of those schools where, you know, it's been supported by Adam Urbanski. There's been written documentation that he has sent to the school, to the teachers over there, and so we've got to turn this around. And so, I'm hoping that this kind of counseling and professional development is the beginning of working in to come against the racist attitudes that we have in some of the teachers who are in School 41.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Any other comments or questions regarding 763 to 774?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
763, which is the expanded learning time organizations, I just wanted to verify, from my understanding, this is similar to past years where this list means that each organization is kind of like qualified and accepted by us to provide services, but it doesn't imply any commitment or extension in this resolution? That's something that would be done subsequently? Okay, thanks. That's all.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 763 to 774?
The only thing I'll say is, I'm noted to explain, abstain on Resolution 763, but I'll talk the check about that later. I don't see why I would, but I'm going to, just for the record, abstain on 763.
In 7, what's that?
763.
We have the Rochester Area Foundation that's applying for supplemental academic services. Can you, can somebody explain that to me? Why is the Rochester Area Foundation receiving supplemental educational services, funding? Okay, somebody get back to me on that.
It's all right, no worries.
Good evening. My guess is that that's Quad A, which is the, but R A C F is the fiduciary for Quad A, so they're one of the approved providers of services that was qualified.
Can somebody give me specific information?
But we can verify, yep.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 763 to 774? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 763 to 774, say aye. Aye. Any objections?
And I abstain on 763.
All right, got that. Madam Clerk?
You noted my attention also, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Okay, that would leave us to discuss unfinished business and there is nothing to discuss there. New business, Commissioner Powell?
As I said, we, my expectation is that we would have a full discussion as a Board of Committee of the Hall on June 2nd for Code of Conduct, but I'm happy to launch our conversation about the multicultural global education policy. The authors of this change, this amended policy came to the Board, the Committee on multiple occasions. Commissioner Cruz and before him, Commissioner Campos raised questions about the, the Spanish language integration as well, and Spanish culture integration, as well as the African, African-American studies. And so, this policy went through an iterative process where we just worked on the outstanding concerns until commissioners at the table were comfortable with the direction and with, and that there was a real collaborative spirit with the administrators that were presenting to us. It was clear that they believed that the language that they were presenting to us was going to become actionable, that it was going to translate into a better curriculum and a, and a more student-centric classroom experience. Commissioner Cruz, do you have anything you would like to add about the conversations we had in, around this policy?
No, I think, I think you've explained it well, just that we had invested some resources in a person to do some consulting work with regard to our Latino achievement and that person was also involved in this process and provided some really good positive feedback on putting together the language in the resolution. So, I think it was a good, it was a good process and it ended up being a good resolution.
I'll sit.
I'm prepared to field any questions.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
All right, I guess we're good there. I did want to add an item for new business. I did want folks to think that we are on an island as a Board of Education with respect to our, our current deliberations regarding our next superintendent. I know many of you have read stuff in the newspaper and different media outlets. Trust me, most of what you read in those outlets is inaccurate. I would almost say all of it is, so don't rely on your news to find out, because the Board said quite a while ago that they were going to have a closed process and we've kept that, so people who are sharing information don't possess accurate information because it's, if it's not coming from the Board, it's not accurate. So, I did want to tell you all, notwithstanding the fact it's a closed process, that we have had an excellent pool of applicants for this position of superintendent. And I think it is fair to characterize that pool, we could choose any one of these candidates, including the ones that aren't in the finalist round, and they would have been exceptional superintendents. So, I want you all to know that we're deliberating over a pool of people who are qualified and committed to serving this district and you all should be encouraged by that. We have conducted interviews and all I will say is, I believe that the Board of Education will meet its self-imposed deadline of selecting a superintendent before the end of June. That will make a number of you very happy, but I know it will make this person sitting to my right. But, yeah, we're going to keep her, but I did feel it important on behalf of the Board to share that information. We don't want you to think, we don't want you to be in the loop about what we're doing and I want you to feel very confident that we feel confident that we'll have a superintendent. And the only other thing I will say, and this is my personal observation, don't think that just because we pick a superintendent that everything is going to be totally transformed. Also, do not think that just because we pick a superintendent, your job is going to be easy and that the Board is going to change what it's doing. That's not going to happen. We're bringing on another partner, a partner, and you all need to be mindful of that. So, your job isn't going to get easier, the challenges aren't just going to magically go away, but you can trust us in this, you are going to have an excellent partner to assist you in your efforts, okay? Can I get a-
Mr. President?
Let me start down here and work our way back. Mr. Cruz?
Just an announcement, I, there's a, the Rochester Latino Theater League is putting on a play called Separate is Never Equal, and it's a story of Sylvia Mendez. She, phenomenal background, she was eight years old, wanted to go to an all-white school in California and she was barred from going to school. And this is in 1946. And her and her family and the community filed grievances, filed a lawsuit and started the process in California up to segregating the schools in California. Now, why this is significant is that in 1946, the Brown versus Board of Education was in 1954. And Thurgood Marshall, at the time, was representing the Mendez plea in 1946 and used that amicus to bolster his case for the 1954 Brown versus Board of Education lawsuit, which eventually opened and desegregated all schools in the country. Tremendous, so this is going to be June 8th again, June 8th through June 11th, it's going to be at the M U C C C Theater and I would just urge everyone to go and it's supposed to be a great. On the 7th of June, I'm going to be on XXI's Connections and Ms. Mendez is going to be calling in. So, there's a tremendous amount of history happening and I understand the scuttlebutt is that she might be in Rochester for one of the performances, so.
There was an email saying that she would be at the opening-
At the opening night, so she's going to be here. So, tremendous amount of history with regard to education and it's coming to Rochester, so.
I'm moving it down. Any other last thoughts? Be mindful that we have an executive session that we have to go to.
Motion to go to the executive session.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, point of personal privilege, a couple of things I didn't share while I had the mic for my committee report. On Tuesday, the 24th, I was in Albany, the, our annual Big Five Executive Committee met. We passed the Big Five's budget. I want you all to know that the dues for Big Five is not going up next year. This, June 5th, the weekend of June 5th, I will be back in Albany for NISBA's quarterly meeting and then the following weekend, I will be at the National Advocates Institute in Washington, DC. So, if I don't answer your phone, okay, it's because I'm just not around.
All right, I think Commissioner Evans did make a motion.
Going and seconded.
And is it seconded by Vice President Elliott? All those in favor say aye. For you diehard Gladiator fans, we were going to reconvene downstairs on the second floor and that's where we'll leave from. Good night, everybody.